The regular meeting on the Richmond Board of Education will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Virgin, at Richmond Community Schools, we provide a quality education that empowers students to be successful in a global community. Thank you. For all time, Doug? Here. Angela? Here. Our president, Tyone?
Here.
Danielle?
Here.
Margaret?
Here.
Sherry?
Here.
Thank you. We have one. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
I motion to accept the agenda as presented. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Just to let our public know, Mr. Wonsley is with us tonight. He is just here by phone, so he will be present. He can hear everything and he can respond. I am looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the consent agenda as presented in the attached documentation.
Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Wonsley usually does personnel.
We have three new hires. One is Catherine Garcia. She is a specialized peer professional. David Kemp. David Kemp was a former bus driver. He resigned last year and has now come back to be substitute bus driver for us. And Kaylani Hendrick, who's a child care personnel. Also, just upon notification of Boyden Dan Hill would be the junior varsity basketball boys. There was one correction in the minutes, and I don't know if it was in uploading the packet that there was a failure. One of the parents had spoken at the last meeting. This was the scene that brought it to my attention and will get collected when we do the final minutes ago in the official minutes for the board. That's it.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
No questions, just Dan Hill's standing back there, and it sure is nice to see him come back and help out with the boys' basketball program. Thanks, Dan.
Okay, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Wonsley, a bond update?
We are still continuing working on the punch list. The last of the teacher furniture arrived this afternoon. The teachers have received several emails from teachers thanking the board and myself for the furniture. They really enjoyed it, so that fell into place last week. As I said, we're still going through the punch list items. There are still items that we're still waiting from the supply chain to come in. And if you've driven by the weight room and seen the glass windows are going up, we should be finishing that within the next, I would say, two months. That area should be finished. Tonight, we have on the agenda the approval of the baseball and softball field renovations and site improvements. The amount of awards that came in did come in higher than what we budgeted, but after meeting with the board team, we still have the dollars to be able to do it. As we expected, some of the items coming up are due to cost inflation. We are starting to see some of those. We got the first round, we did the first go around with the field, the first major improvement on your budget. These are now coming in, and we'll re-budget them a little bit more. But as I mentioned, we are on team on that, and we are confident that good dollars are there to complete those renovations. That's it.
Anyone have any questions from Mr. Wonsley? Okay, our next item on the agenda is our presentation. I'm going to turn it over to Danielle. She's going to talk about our staff culture survey results.
Alrighty, so we were able to send out the survey to all of the staff. We sent it to teachers, administrators, support staff, everybody from the cafeteria to the bussing, to custodians. Everybody in the district received that. It was approximately like 200, 225 people. We had 113 people respond to that email or to that survey. There was 10 questions, eight of which had content, and then two were just demographics. We had about 43% of like the new teachers, the zero to five years, I would consider them newer, to the district responded, and then 25% were in that six to 10. And then the other 28% were those 16-plus tenure teachers. So we got some information, some good feedback, some positive feedback that we want to continue working on and keeping those strengths as strengths. And then we got a couple pieces of feedback on weaknesses, and our plan is kind of to address those and try to make Richmond continue going on the positive path, make it better.
I just want to add to Danielle's report. When I read the comments, a lot of comments were addressing the teachers sobbing during their prep hours, and that's partly due to the sub issue. I just want to let you know that Mr. Wonsley was on top of that back in November. He sent a letter to the board letting us know that we need to get competitive in our pay. So as of November 15th, we are paying $150 per day for the building subs, and then we're paying 125 a day for our single-day subs. In our area, Armadas pay in 120, Lons Cruz is 100, Lons Cruz, they're permanent, is 120, New Haven's 125, and Memphis is 100. So this puts us a little bit above what everybody around us is. Hopefully, that we will be able to pull more subs in to help us so that we're not having to ask our staff to sub during their prep time. I also, there were comments on the survey about the pay, and I know that, I believe, the last board and then the current board has really tried to bring our pay up. This is the first time since I know that we did a 3% raise on the teacher scale. That scale had never been touched in years. We've also brought teachers up to where they should have been when we started to make cuts or just roast things. So I believe that this board and I believe our past board are dedicated into trying to work on getting our pay up and to be a little more competitive. I'm going to ask our board to take a look at the comments in there, and when we come back in January, we're going to pick maybe one or two that we feel that we can do as a board, work with Mr. Wonsley, and see if we can do some of the suggestions. There were actually a couple, probably about 10 of them, that teachers actually put some suggestions that I think are doable. I know Danielle and I had talked about them. I think there are things that we can do to help hopefully make the morale and make things a little bit better. I want you to know that we took it seriously. I want you to know that we will share that data with you, and I want you to know that we are going to take it the next step. It's just not going to be okay, we did a survey and it gets shuffled away. We are going to take the next step. So we will set some goals in January, and we do our first meeting of the year. Okay, review of board policies is our next one. This is per the recommendation of our district attorney. I am not going to read off all of the items that are on here. She just recommended that I point out some of them. So on policy 2101, the board will evaluate or cause to be evaluated the progress and results of the district educational programs on a continuing basis. In making those evaluations, the board will consider the superintendent's analysis and recommendation. Individual board members do not speak on the board's behalf without board approval. Public communications by individual board members about district matters must clearly indicate that the board member is not speaking on the board's behalf. Board members will not disclose privileged or confidential information unless permitted by board action or applicable by law. The other one she pointed out is in 2302, the board code of ethics. Remember that the board member's primary concern must be the educational welfare of the students attending this district. Focus on governments and not management. Encourage constructive dialogue among board members and among the board. Work constructively and collaboratively with each board member to establish effective policies and procedures. Work constructively and collaboratively with the superintendent. Recognize the superintendent as the district's chief executive officer. Refer complaints to the superintendent. Avoid an actual or perceived conflict of interest. Comply with the Open Meetings Act. Be mindful of board members' fiduciary obligations to the district, including duties of loyalty and care, placing the district's interests above a board member's personal interests. Those were the items that she wanted me to share with you, just as a review. We do have a lot of new members, and we're still, I think, believe, we're still trying to figure those pieces out, so that was her recommendation to share those sections with you. Any questions on that?
I don't necessarily know if it's a question, but when you were getting all that information from the attorney that we've probably gone over many times, did you have any conversation about our policy 2303, violation of board code of ethics? Was that rolled around at all for any information?
She did not.
No, no. Did you ask her?
Did I ask her about what I know on there? We did talk about 2302, but there's certain...
No, no, I'm talking about 2303. 2302, board code of ethics.
Okay.
And it talks about what happens when those ethics are violated. So did you go any step further?
No.
Then can I?
If you want, I'll take it one step further and ask them.
Yeah, that would be wonderful. And I just have to make a copy, take one and pass it down.
Which number is it again?
2303. I think that one should be looked at as well, if we're going to talk about the other two.
Okay. I will get with her, and I'll get back and report back at our next meeting.
How many times have we gone over this in the last 11 months?
A lot.
Well, until we get it right, we will continue.
It's unacceptable.
Pardon me?
Without consequence, it's unacceptable.
Well, that's why I think 2303 is very important to look at, because we can't continue to sit here as a board and allow things to happen and not follow through completely on those policies that you're referring to. 2303 should be looked at.
Okay.
And maybe we could have it on the agenda December, whatever. I don't know what our meeting date is.
Can I just make a comment? When I first got on the board, I know that we don't budget for board member classes and training, in that it's expected that if we want any, that we have to pay for it out of our pocket, which I get to a degree. But also, I feel that some of our issues, you know, we've had to call in a lawyer, which is also a cost. So I feel, since we are in the field of education, the fact that this district doesn't pay to educate board members, especially new members, it's a lot to know. It's a very lot to know. And so I just wanted to put that out there, because it was something I brought up the first year I was on, and I feel like you could alleviate some of these problems if you educate people. And yes, we could self-educate ourselves by looking up and browsing the internet and all sorts of resources out there, but there's nothing like getting taught, like from people who know. Or you can ask questions, and you can be taught. Not everybody is a self-learner and just can understand things right off the bat. I could probably, you know, self-teach myself to be a doctor, but I don't think I'd be effective if, you know, if I just talk, write it in a book or online. So I just, come budget time, I hope we can think about...
Have that discussion.
Yeah, investing in ourselves, and which is an investment in this district and which might alleviate some problems that we have here for us and for future board members.
And now, just so...
Very...
I'm sorry.
Very good point. Did everyone at this table take School Board 101?
Yes.
It's all laid out there in that class. Did all board members sitting at this table do the orientation when you become a new board member that the superintendent and board president provides to you?
Nope. I know I didn't.
Anybody else not do it?
No.
That helps.
Sure.
And as far as not being able to take those classes, when we paid for those classes for a certain amount of time, you're right, and then we decided we were looking at what our budget was and all of that kind of stuff.
Outstanding.
Absolutely. I myself have taken many, many classes over the years and have spent my own money to become a better board member, and I don't use the excuse that the classes aren't paid for me. You can come to the table and you can ask for classes to be paid for. I believe we've had that discussion before. You can't keep over and over again making mistakes and saying, "Oh, I don't know," or "I didn't take a class."
Just so the public knows, the district does cover the first class through MASV, and it's an introductory class about the Open Meetings Act and things like that. They also then have additional coursework that you could take to you become a certified board member. So I think what Sherry was talking about was those additional classes that we would be able to take or can take. And I do know, I agree with Margaret, that you can petition the board to pay for it. It may not happen, but you can petition the board. Any other comments on that topic? Okay, we are to public comments. Since the last board meeting, I have not received any emails from the community. At this time, any member of the public may address the board. Please sign in and state your name. You will have three minutes to address the board. Are there any public comments?
Hi, my name is Brandon Day. I've been associated with Richmond Community Schools for nearly 20 years as a parent, community member, teacher, and coach. I'm addressing this evening because I would like some questions answered. It's been brought to my attention that emails regarding my employment and extracurricular assignments have been circulating among board members. I have also been informed that my personnel file and financial records have been FOIA'd by Ms. Shueboy. Upon learning this, I reached out to Ms. Shueboy several weeks ago, and I have not yet received response. I would like to know what you're looking for, what your objective is. I have community members asking me if I impart something that's not helping them. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, please understand that as a teacher and a coach, all I have is my reputation and the hope that trust can be built between students, parents, athletes, and myself. Ms. Shueboy, my reputation has been damaged. I have been told that the motivation for email was that I was going around town bragging to the community about receiving a pay raise. I can assure you, ma'am, that's an absolute lie. Within days of having the opportunity to take on another duty and give more of my time for this school district, my father became ill. I spent the next three weeks driving back and forth from Richmond to the Pure Regional Hospital, sitting at a side accompanying my mother until his passing. I wasn't in town. I wasn't bragging to anyone. I was greeting with my mother and my siblings. I take great offense to these claims. I'd like to know who was giving you your information. I can assure you, whomever it is presenting these half-truths and gossip to you as fact, when it relates to me, does not have your best interest and/or the best interest of the district and mine, or rather, their own agenda. I have taken great pride in being part of the Richmond community. I've stayed loyal multiple times when other districts offered me more money. I've raised my two little girls in the district. I have helped send dozens of first-generation students and athletes to college on scholarship. My program has brought in over $850,000 in school of choice money, helping countless kids and protecting teachers' jobs. Ms. Shueboy, ask me again, what is your agenda? Why are you attacking my reputation, the reputation of those that value what I do for Richmond? Are you here to provide more opportunities for kids, increase test scores, increase pride in the community, or is your sole purpose for being on the board to attack coaches, RAA members, and our superintendent? Ladies and gentlemen of the board, as educators and elected officials, our job is to model character and perseverance to the youth of our community, not in an environment of gossip, half-truths, and agendas. I am asking those of you with integrity and ethics to please put an end to this before any more coaches and RAA members have their reputations damaged. I look forward to your response. My attorney has asked me to FOIA, so Mr. Deal, this is my FOIA for board members' emails and media communications with my name in it, so thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comments?
Hi, I'm Amy Steyer. I'm up here today to speak for teachers and staff at the district that fear backlash and they're speaking for themselves. We have teachers and staff that have asked for us, the parents in our group, to speak for them and for their voices. They do not want to be forced to do a medical procedure they do not feel comfortable with. They fear their job, and if they don't, they fear their health, if they do. And no one should have to feel that way, period. I strongly hope if this tyranny continues, they stay on their ground, but I hope it never comes down to that as well. To lose amazing staff and teachers would be detrimental to our Blue Devils community and our children's education. So I stand before you here today asking you to hold the line. Don't support what I think most of you feel and know is morally wrong. Stand by those that want what's right, the right to choose. I know myself and over 300 parents support this as well. Let's do what's right, because enough is enough.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I don't know what all of that, about what happened the last meeting or whatever, and I certainly didn't know anything about what's going on with Coach Day. But I brought my kids here two years ago specifically for these coaches and for these teachers. To hear that there could even be a possibility that you're talking about forcing our teachers into getting these vaccines or going after someone like Coach Day, I don't know what has gotten into this board, but it has to stop. This is unreal. This last week alone, the school has managed to take everything that I've done with my kids for the last two years to keep COVID out of their lives and bring it directly into my house. My nine-year-old son was questioned about his health. He was questioned if he had been tested for COVID, all because he had a cough at school, and nobody knew that he had been on antibiotics for two days. All of this is getting absolutely out of control. You have no rights to talk to our children about their health. You are forcing things into this school that don't need to be... You don't ask anything about the flu. Nobody's questioning for strep tests. All of this stuff has to absolutely stop. It needs to just go back to normal and leave these kids alone.
I'm sorry, did you get our name?
No.
Can you give me your name, please? Can I have your name, please?
Miranda.
Miranda, when you're listening?
C-H-A-U-V-I-N.
C-H-A-U-V-I-N. Thank you.
Hi there, my name's Terry Davis. My son Luke Davis graduated a couple of years ago. He's school of choice to come down here when he was in seventh grade. We had an amazing experience, first off, meeting Mr. Wonsley. He took Luke on his tour, gave his card, gave out his cell phone number, and Luke made the choice basically when he met Mr. Wonsley. Had a great experience with Coach Day and the coaching staff. I've heard some of these rumors, and I can tell you this, as a parent who entrusted our son to this community, to the coaches, couldn't be further from the truth. Brandon Day took my kid all over the country, taught him a lot of things, taught him about how to be a man, taught him about respect, taught him about responsibility, taught him about working hard, taught him about telling the truth, and I trust him, the coaching staff, Mr. Wonsley, Ms. Teltow, to the fullest extent. And anything that would be said contrary, it's a lie. So I hope that you investigate some of the things that were said. I hope that people look inward about what they're doing, and if it's a personal agenda, then maybe it's time to go. I don't really like to publicly speak. The last time I did it was in Fort Huron, when we left and made the choice to come down here. That was a negative experience, and this was phenomenal. And I can tell you, if my son could be here, he's in North Carolina, if he heard these things, he would be too happy. So maybe when he comes home, he'll come talk about some of these things as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, then we will move on. Okay, Mr. Wonsley, superintendent, and legislative update?
Okay, I will begin. We have a couple athletic events coming up. We have the middle school girls' basketball, which was tonight. We have middle school boys' wrestling, which is coming up on the 30th of November. And on the December 1st, we have again the middle school girls' basketball. Again, Saturday, December 4th, we have middle school boys' wrestling. So I encourage people to check the website, the athletic website, for the current dates and kinds of events, just to make sure if there's any changes, they'd be posted there. Some building updates. The elementary school, the student council is collecting gifts for Sandy's Kids. For those of you in the audience, Sandy's Kids is a district organization that provides support for Richmond families during the holidays, throughout the course of the year. It's headed by our social workers, particularly this entire time, we've been spearheading a lot of this, but the other social workers to our development and helping out here. The elementary Spanish ingredient began this week, and it's pretty exciting to see their PBIS assembly. The elementary school members are gratitude this week, or this month, they've been trying to focus on different life skills and character traits with the students to help them. At the middle school, I think it's pretty awesome, the National Junior Honor Society's wicked, wonderful success this year, and what I think has been pretty awesome, Mr. Bartellini, where there was a lead in our community that came out after the kids were breaking the lead and to, you know, kind of, the kids must have been angels sent from heaven, and to cheering up the grade, to the physics students who did it. So it just goes to show the generosity of our students and the special and massive generosity. The Senate board has begun, so Mr. Bartellini, Mr. Brookwire, observations and pre-observations of teachers and guidance are rolling away. At the high school, a couple of our students are looking on their ice cream, and they actually did some apple swan creations to demonstrate their right to go as part of the space, school thing, sort of, excuse me, certification that our students go, go, go. The kindness is a fundamental, a big success, which is a random act of kindness, which went after our affirmations were delivered to various students, well, through sanctuary donations, or collect. Part of the legislative update, not much has gone on in the legislative areas, have been adjourned for hundreds, there's no action in place. If you want to report, because you may hear this in the newspaper, Elizabeth Bartellini, director of the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, is expected to issue a safety mask advisory. It is not, I repeat, not mandatory, but because of the surge in cases, the COVID and the flu outbreak, she's recommending people wear basic masks again, and not mandatory, but there is a recommendation, so I don't know how it's going to be presented in the media and so forth, but it is just a recommendation. You may have also heard that OSHA has suspended the implementation of the DTS, which is the emergency standards for testing, testing. It's been challenged in the Fifth, Sixth, Seventh, Eighth, and Eleventh Circuit Court. It's been challenged in so many courts, federal courts, the lottery that was drawn in the Fifth Circuit, which represents Michigan, Ohio, Tennessee, and Kentucky, was actually... in the Fifth Circuit, which represents Michigan, Ohio, Tennessee, and Kentucky, was actually selected, even the Sixth Court, was selected to hear the case. At this point, there will be a judge, a panel of three judges that will listen to the case and determine whether it's constitutional or not. If they do rule and uphold the ruling, and more than likely, this will go to the Supreme Court. And I mention this because there's a requirement of dates that are probably this OSHA regulations the district's original, but the finer more toys. We at the district are not moving forward in this. We're going to share the information with our staff. I cannot put that out last week. Mr. Deal and I are working on the communication process just to let people know that we are not implementing what we absolutely have to. So just stay tuned on that one. Recently last week, as of the last Thursday, we get back, the MPE gave clarification on the 75% attendance. If you want to question, you may. If you recall last year, the 2021 full year, the district had a lot of flexibility with their people attendance. We have gone back to pre-pandemic rules. So they outlined and reminded the district that you need 75% district-wide attendance to be able to come in as a day of obstruction. If you follow that, you have to make up a day, and it's also that clarification level. How the probation would happen if you did not have 1,098 minutes or 100 days. So we are just watching that. We are not concerned. Our numbers have been good all year so far as a district, so it is something that we are watching, and it may potentially affect the number of students that are eager to go or take and wear a test of conduct. And finally, I'll end with, at the end of the day tomorrow, the district will be closed for Thanksgiving break. Well, there are still our retired staff and students. They will charge two, three months if they remain at school. So at this time, I wish I could make some verification, staff, the students, and their families, the next of each hundred community, happy Thanksgiving. I hope it's an enjoyable one, that you have a few or a couple. That concludes my vote.
Anybody have any comments for Mr. Wamsley? Thank you, Mr. Wamsley. Okay. Action items or items of interest from the board? Sheri, I'll start with you.
I'm Elsa.
Margaret?
I just had one, just to let the board know. I had a conversation with Brian last week about, and I told him I was going to bring it up. Girls' Basketball was doing a fundraiser, and was told that they're fundraising for everything, for balls, uniforms, all of that stuff. So my question to Brian that I would like to have us discuss, January-ish, when we get to start talking about budget, what is, what's all in the athletic line items? I mean, it used to be where we updated uniforms, that kind of stuff. So if we, Brian's words to me was that we provide the basics for athletics. I would really like to know what that is, if we're telling parents that we're fundraising for balls and uniforms. To me, that's basics. So I would just like that conversation to happen.
Well, I add to the budget discussion. Thank you. Bridgette?
Mr. Day, mine is to you. I did get your two missed phone calls. I did think it was appropriate to speak to you on the phone. I would like to sit down and speak with you, though. I think you have been informed incorrectly of my intentions, and I would like to sit down and talk with you, for sure.
Kyle?
I have nothing.
Danielle?
I just want to say thank you to Mr. Gibson at the elementary. He read a book to the preschoolers today, and that is all my son could talk about coming home today. So it was a really good experience. They got a lot out of it, even though they're preschool and squirmy, they really did get something out of it. So that was nice to see that. And I know Mr. Wamsley mentioned it's the middle school rake and run, and I thought that was genius. That was awesome. Very cool idea.
Angela?
I would just like to, I guess, apologize to Mr. Day on behalf of the board for you even being brought up as it was. I have firsthand experience, both of, you had two children, two boys that loved you. You're an excellent teacher, and you're a great asset to the district. And I just hope that, you know, things will eventually calm down with the new board, and you will all realize that we are trying to do what is best for the district, but there are some growing pains. So thanks.
I just want to remind our community, on December 4th, the Richmond Community Schools will be participating in the City of Richmond Parade. We are going to have a bus decorated, and we'll be out there. And then on December 8th, we have the Holiday Band Concert. And December 16th, we have the High School Choir Concert. I too wish, as Mr. Wamsley, the board wishes all of our staff, our students, and our families a happy Thanksgiving. Our action items. I need, I am looking for a motion for the approval of the second reading of the board policies that are listed.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the second reading of the following board policies as presented at the November 8th, 2021 Board of Education meeting and outlined in the attached documentation. 2501A Electronic Board of Education Meetings, 2505 Board Committee, 3102 Smoking Tobacco Products, Drugs, and Alcohol, 3118 Title IX Sexual Harassment, 3306 Construction Bidding, 4108 Union Activity and Representation, 4112 Extracurricular Employees or Volunteers, 5101 Student Expression, that should not be, 5202 Unlawful Discrimination, Harassment, and Retaliation Against Students, 5708 Do Not Resuscitate Order, and 5710 Student Suicide Prevention.
Do I have a support? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I'm... I'm sorry, who supported that? Angela.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. I'm looking for a motion to approve the second reading of the board policy 5106, the transgender student.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the second reading of board policy 5106, transgender students as presented at the November 8th, 2021 Board of Education meeting and outlined in the attached documentation.
Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion?
There is nothing in this that I support in this policy.
Just from someone who's been in the building, if we don't have the policy, we're still going to have to have some direction because we have students and parents coming to us with these issues. So if we don't put a policy in, Brian is still, Mr. Wamsley is still going to have to give some directions to our buildings because we do have students. Any other comments? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Okay. I'm looking for a motion for the approval of contracts for the baseball softball field renovation and site improvement. This is a long one. Who wants it?
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award the following contracts as outlined in the corresponding bid documents. To Metropolitan Concrete Corporation for an amount not to exceed $68,000 for proposal 3.1 concrete flatwork. Brunkell for an amount not to exceed $71,000 for proposal 3.2 cast-in-place concrete. Silverado Masonry for an amount not to exceed $157,250 for proposal 4.1 masonry. For Cross-Erectors for an amount not to exceed $28,362 for proposal 5.1 structural steel and miscellaneous iron. To Diversified Construction for an amount not to exceed $137,993 for proposal 6.1 carpentry and millwork, MDH frames and hardware, FRP doors and hardware. To GV Painting for an amount not to exceed $28,100 for proposal 9.1 painting. To CNM Associates for an amount not to exceed $75,720 for proposal 11.1 athletic equipment and scoreboards. To Wade's Electrical Contracting for an amount not to exceed $26,000 for proposal 26.1 electrical. To Superior Contracting Group LLC for an amount not to exceed $245,000 for proposal 3.1 site work and site utilities. And to RMD Holdings Limited, doing business as Nationwide Construction Group, for an amount not to exceed $398,090 for proposal 32.1 vinyl coated chain link fence and gates. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools, for which funding from the 2020 school building and site bond Series 1 is available.
Do I have support? Support. Any discussion?
Brian, did we ever get an answer on left field of the new softball field?
Could you repeat that again, Jenny? Could you say that again, Eric and Jerry again?
What was that called? The new field, the new softball field, Jerry was talking about 180 feet. Did we get any confirmation on that?
That is, I did receive it, I apologize. It is the 180 that matches the other side, the other side, which is what the regulations and approved by the softball coach. The going to, as you're looking at the field, move the field to the left, it starts getting to that left land area over there, the drainage, and it becomes, we can't go farther to the left.
I get it.
Or to the right, if you're looking at the field, it's under parking lot.
Lot of money to spend on a new field that looks like it gets squeezed in.
Jenny, could you repeat that again?
He says a lot of money to spend on a field that looks like it's getting squeezed in. Just my abstains. I have to abstain from this vote anyway. I'm associated with the baseball program. He's going to abstain from this vote anyway. I'm associated with the program.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay. This is a roll call vote. Margaret?
Aye.
Sheri?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Bridgette?
Aye.
Aye. We have...
You have to ask me so I can abstain.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
I abstain.
Thank you. We have six ayes and one abstaining. Motion carries. Okay. Being there, no other business, the board will adjourn at 7:42.